So, good evening. This is the October fourteen, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. All of our regular members are present. Before we go on with our public hearing, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, I think we all should think about what's happening to the people of Jamaica. We visited Jamaica a non-standard way. We rented a villa, we hired a driver, and we went up into the hills and we saw the kind of dwellings that some of these people were living in, which were basically tarpaulins and pieces of plywood, kind of built into dwellings. And the electricity was strong on extension cords from one dwelling to the next. I don't know where they tapped in, but those dwellings are just gonna disappear in this storm. It's a very, very serious, I mean, it's tornado-strength winds, so that's, that's just gonna be a horrible thing. And then I have to, of course, comment, this is my last time as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was going back through a little history. I was appointed to ZBA in September two thousand, thanks to Marge Anthony, a Democratic town committee leader. And you'll never guess who was the staff member present at that meeting.
Boy, I enjoyed those meetings.
Michelle Life is-
A better place for a planner than ZBA.
Michelle has been with me for twenty-five years. You know, in ZBA for twelve years, I was a council liaison to planning and zoning, was an alternate. Two thousand thirteen, I got to be a regular and, I mean, I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's such a fascinating part of our government, so I'm looking forward to retiring from this, but I'm also looking back on some really interesting times. So, we're gonna have a public hearing. We'll ask the secretary to read the notice.
Stand up.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've already forgotten the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now we'll ask the secretary to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM in the Madden Room, on the downstairs level of the South Windsor Town Hall, to consider the following. Number one, application twenty-five dash forty-seven P, Patel re-subdivision and detached accessory apartment. This is a request for a two-lot re-subdivision of two-point-three acres, including one lot with an existing house and detached accessory apartment, on property located at three-eighty-nine Griffin Road, A twenty Zone. Copies of the applications are on file in the office of the town clerk and order Planning Department, and online at south windsor-dt.gov/Planning. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard, and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff at eight-six-zero-six-four-four-two-five-one-one, extension two-three-two-nine. Stephen Wagner, Chair, Mining and Zoning Commission.
I just do wanna make a correction. I said this was October fourteen, it's October twenty-eighth. And the way we do our public hearings is we listen to the applicant, they present whatever material they have to present. Then we ask the staff to comment. Usually, our director of planning and possibly assistant planner will have something to say. At that point, we open the hearing to members of the public, who can speak either in favor or against, or have comments and questions, something they wanna see changed. Finally, we go to the commissioners, who will be asking questions of any nature or making comments of any nature. If you do speak as a member of the public and you have questions, we won't answer them at the time you speak, but we will get around to that when the commissioners are, are taking their turn. So, applicant for application twenty-five forty-seven P? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kevin Patel, the owner of three-eighty-nine Griffin Road, which I'm looking for a re-subdivision because there's three buildings on the lot now, just to make it legal per se, and just to go along with living in one of these two buildings and potentially sell them off more, if we see what the future plans could be.
Good evening. My name is Jack Gilmartin, I'm with J.L. Surveying. Formerly from Berlin, now in transition, I'm moving and so we're using my home address as nine Megget Park as the moving address. I usually put on a bill post for bill signing, you know, for payments. What we got here is three houses on one parcel. The parcel's listed at three-eighty-nine. There are also two other mailboxes on the property. They have the mailing address of three eighty-seven and three eighty-five. So, you spoke about your longevity, that I was telling Kevin about the movie of Forty-Second Street, if you remember, the decision on the, where Santa Claus was not real because there were legal mailing addresses for the property, so that being said, so we'll push that area. So, what we're looking, trying to do is basically what Kevin says, is try to clean up the lot to, to make it basically legal. So, with the, it's two, two-point-two acres of our land, there's wetlands in the back, we have a hundred fifty, a hundred-foot buffer line. We're not proposing to do anything to the property. We're not looking to build anything at this point. We have, we will see when I turn the next page, we spoke to planning and it talked about whether we wanna put a garage in at one time or not, and it suggested why not should do that now, so the commission may be aware of it. Whether we ever do it or not, we'll go through the permit process when we get to that level. So, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do is split the property into two parcels. And what I kinda highlighted the yellow is where the boundary line's gonna be between the two. Again, we're not doing anything with the wetlands or any of the, often the dew area, we're not doing any regrading, everything else. There's, the houses are in, the septic systems are in for these two houses. This house is serviced with water and sewer from the roof and gas, recently been, been added in. What, what we're looking to do, you see this hatched area here, this is a driveway that comes sweeping around and goes all the way through the property. Because of the encroachment stuff, we, we're looking to take this part of the driveway out at one point. Again, the, and make that green space, so that's the only thing that we're doing, is we're making it more pervious, if you can say, in a sense. We do have a well back here, which is servicing all three parcels. There's a, a water line going over to this house, which has been disconnected, and there's a water line going over here, and obviously servicing that property. When we met with staff and we're talking about where we go with this, and you'll see in our next drawing, we're looking to, we, we put in that we were looking to have new water lines coming in. The question came up, would the health department want us to continue to have one well servicing two buildings? Or would they prefer us to have new water lines coming in off the street to these two different properties? And, and so for that review, they'll make that decision, but we're prepared on the site plan to do, if you keep the well, we'll keep it, if they suggest, we don't, we're, we're also proposing and showing that we're, we're looking to cut a new water line and, and come into the property. There's a telephone pole out here, there's a pole also inside the property that we have direct electricity overhead here. The power comes in and goes off to the two buildings, so there's no, I know one of the comments we got from staff was, any new electrical would be underground, we're not, we don't need to. It's there, it's there, it's serviced to all the buildings. The third thing, I don't know, oh, here, back to this drawing. The other thing that came up in recent conversation, when we had a, we had a site visit with the wetlands representative of the town and planning, and it came, it was a question about whether we would be willing to give a conservation easement on a property. And we basically said, fine, you know, we have no problem with it. The, the land in the back is town property, it's already, so this is kind of, what it does is you have a brook down below here, and what it does by giving us the conservation easement, it kinda protects that brook more, now that there's no, no activity can be in it. So now this side from that ridge is basically how we, we define this easement, is by the ridge line. So from the ridge this way, the, the brook is further protected now from the sign. What else we doing? That's, that's pretty much it. There's, there's adequate driveways for the two properties. I think we recently got a comment from, was it from engineering about fire trucks coming in or something, but...
There were comments from engineering, which, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to read them.
Well, we'll get to that.
So, basically, like Kevin says, we're making a wrong right. You've got three houses on a property. This, this, there is a permit, there was a taken permit, I think it was nineteen fifty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, for, for this building. I think, to be honest, not knowing the history or the property or anything, I, I think what might have been, this was the original farmhouse. We went through the lawn and everything, it was cleaned up, we found out there's a foundation in here, that will be removed because it's a, it's, it's over the, you know, it's an encroachment on the two lots. So we're looking to take that out, clean that out, and I think this might have been the original garage, and that this was a carriage house put in. You know, nobody really cared back then, but it's, it's not right. So, what we're trying to do is separate the two lots. The, one of the stipulations in the regulation as far as having this is that the owner has to live in a property. It can't be leased out or subleased or anything like that. So the owner, to continue this use of these two buildings, it has to be owner-occupied, which we, again, agree to. Other than that, again, there, there acre-plus lots, good-sized lots, beautiful broken field back there, it's gonna be protected.
Anything else?
I guess not.
Okay. In that case, town staff, Mr. Russo?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so this is a request for a two-lot re-subdivision of two-point-three acres, including one lot with an existing house and detached accessory apartment for a property located at three-eighty-nine Griffin Road, A twenty Zone. So this is a historic property, the principal dwelling, number three-nine, dates back to eighteen hundred. And it appears that additional dwellings, number three-eighty-seven and number three-eighty-five, were built in nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen forty-eight, respectively. One, we found that the building records for these structures are unclear. Only one accessory dwelling unit can be documented through the building files. Our zoning regulations do not allow for three dwellings on one property. So this re-subdivision would rectify the non-conforming condition by designating number three-eighty-seven as the principal dwelling on the newly-created Lot Three-A. And then number three-eighty-five would then become the accessory apartment to that. This application appears to comply with our zoning regulation, except for the front yard setback of number three-eighty-nine. However, since the structure was built in eighteen hundred, it is legally non-conforming. Lot areas of both proposed properties exceed twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size. Side and rear yard setbacks and frontage all exceed required minimums. Lot coverages are well below the maximum percentage. One item is that the required columns of the zoning tables shown on the plans need to be updated to be accurate to our A twenty requirements. So, under normal circumstances, accessory apartments are capped at either thirty percent of the usable floor area of the primary dwelling or a thousand square feet, whichever is smaller. Additionally, when the accessory apartment is detached, they can't be closer than thirty feet to the property line in zones where a setback is less than thirty feet. Since this dwelling unit was constructed in nineteen forty-eight, under a section of the regulations that allowed for domestic housing units, as it was called, it's being considered an existing non-conforming accessory apartment. Considering this, staff has suggested an approval condition stating that the accessory apartment shall not be permitted to increase in size. As part of our zoning regulations, accessory apartments, as the applicant noted, are not permitted to be short-term rentals and shall not have more than two bedrooms. Properties with accessory apartments shall be owner-occupied, either in the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment. And the planning department requires reaffirmation of this by the property owner every four years. Both properties will be served by public water and septic systems, as the applicant discussed, waiting on information from the health department as to whether the existing well will be abandoned, whether water lines will be brought in. There is an existing loop drive on the property that's proposed to be severed, so each property has its own private driveway. Sufficient parking on Lot Three-A shall be provided. Our regulations require two spaces per dwelling unit and one space per bedroom in accessory apartments. PZC may want to inquire about the maneuverability of the Lot Three-A driveway. Some placeholder vehicles are shown on drawing number three. Additionally, there are regulated wetlands on site, a minimal impact application through the Land Management Agency and Conservation Commission has been filed and approved. As discussed, the conservation easement is being agreed to by the applicant. This would, a legal description and meets and bounds description would end up being prepared by the applicant for review by the town, and upon acceptance will be filed on our land records. I do have additional comments from Tori Sedoti, Town Engineer. Number one, please provide maintenance and protection of traffic measures for the waterline connection in Griffin Road. Standard maintenance protection and traffic details can be found under zero-nine-seven-one-zero-zero-one-A, Traffic Control Plans and Typical Materials. In the link below, there is a link provided. Number two, due to a portion of the driveway being removed, emergency vehicles will have difficulty turning around. Please show turning movements of emergency vehicles within the new driveway limits. Number three, please provide updated plans and details for review if additional site plan improvements are proposed in the future. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Thank you, Tori Sedoti. I'll note that I did speak to the fire marshal about, about the driveways, and he did not have any great concerns because they are existing. So, that's just in addition to Town Engineer's comments. If this application is approved, planning department requests that the lots shall be labeled as Lot One and Lot Two, as opposed to Lot Three and Three-A. And that, that concludes staff comments.
Thank you. Members of the public, anybody wish to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll move on to members of the commission. Commissioner Kevin Arrow?
Thank you. Just one quick question. With the two new units that are being split off into a, a different parcel, do you have like the, I'm not sure if you said it during the presentation, but do you have like the bedroom counts of what you hypothetically thinking? Because I mean, you are capped at two, but I am curious if it's gonna be like a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom or even like an efficiency unit.
Yeah, so three-eighty-seven would most likely be a two-bedroom, this one in the middle.
Yep.
And then for the accessory unit, it's basically torn down inside, so mostly just be a one-bedroom.
Okay.
The accessory unit is the middle unit.
Okay, so that would-
So that's, just so we're clear, the accessory unit is the middle unit, and the other unit would not be limited in size, right? The other unit would be just a regular single-family house and could be any size.
Still get to know it.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Commissioner Terry?
And you said the two lots will each have their own driveway?
Uh, what, no, the, yeah, well, yes, yes. The, the, the big house will have its driveway, and then the other two together have, has the rest of the driveway.
Okay.
And then there's parking area over here, and then, as I think on one of the sheets I showed, excuse me, I showed like where two cars would fit.
Okay, alright. And then for the turnaround that they're requesting for emergency vehicles, there's enough room to?
I don't, I'm a hundred percent, I think what they're looking at is, if they were coming in and they got back here.
Oh, okay.
You know, what would happen, but I believe there's a fire hydrant out over here. These houses are close enough to the street, they may not need to go into the property.
Okay.
It's pretty wide open, and, and honestly speaking, this is just my opinion, and I don't know totally what's gonna happen, but when, usually when people tear out driveways, they take the black top out, they put topsoil down. So the base will probably be there underneath, so if a truck wanted to drive through, I don't think there'd be a problem with them sinking in or there, there'd be, on a virgin ground. It's gonna be the, I mean, that's my opinion, but, not his, but he's the owner.
Commissioner Mercy?
A little clarification on some of the questions that Commissioner Kevin Arrow had. So, Mr. Patel, you're living in three-eighty-seven. Is that your primary residence?
Yes.
And three-eighty-five becomes the accessory apartment?
Three-eighty-five.
Middle.
Three-eighty-five, I'm sorry, becomes the accessory apartment, and that cannot be short-term, so that's gonna be a long-term rental?
Can be, they can be neither one. The owner can be in either building.
Right.
It can't be a short-term rental.
It cannot be. Can it be multifamily, the rental unit?
No.
No, one family?
Yeah.
And then the third unit is a house, three-eighty-nine?
Three-eighty-nine is a house, yes.
And how's that being used?
It's private, well, this will be split off as a private residence.
Okay. So, for sale, a unit for sale?
Most likely, yeah.
And Michelle, did you say that the fire marshal has checked off on this?
I talked to, yeah, I talked to Walter Summers. Yeah, he did not have, he did not have great concerns with it.
The turning, the turning radius issue not an issue, and there would be no, I would imagine there would be no application or need or use for a school bus to need to turn around?
No, not on private property.
I can't imagine that, no.
No, it's not gonna enter.
That's, that's all I have, thanks.
Commissioner Pollak?
I have nothing.
Just have a couple of questions. It's up to you, but you know, having city water, especially when you have property towards the back, sure, fire marshal would, would agree, would be to your advantage. And because we do have a demolition delay committee in town, so anything over seventy-five years old cannot be demolished before going through this committee, so just FYI, okay? Since two of the three are in that ballpark. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Commissioner Baganski?
I have many questions at this time.
Commissioner Capchanis?
No questions.
Mr. Kilborn?
Hi. Just so, the building on the left, you don't live in that one, is, is that currently occupied? We're calling it three-eighty-nine?
Thirty-nine is not occupied.
It's not occupied. And the one in the building you're calling three-eighty-seven, and you're living in that one, correct?
Yes.
And the one on the right, there's nothing in it now, and it's, it's gonna be built out for a tenant, is that?
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Could you speak a little louder? I can't understand.
It will be built out with a one-bedroom or two-bedroom.
But you own the lot where all three buildings are on now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, when this is done, you plan on selling off the original building?
Yeah, most likely, yeah.
Any projects on the site?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So, just to clarify, you are going, you are the owner, and you're now dwelling where? In the accessory building?
The middle unit is the accessory unit, so if he's dwelling-
That's the smallest one on the site.
Yeah. And the, the main building is gonna be up for sale, the original, okay.
And so he would have the option to live in the accessory unit or the house that he reconstructs, right? Because you wouldn't have to be in one or the other.
So, the driveway in the new lot, does it exist?
Yes.
All driveway that you see on the plan exists.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Anybody else? Any reason to keep the public hearing open?
Just one last comment, and you're talking about your history with the town. I worked for thirty-one years with the Town West Oxford Engineering Department, which is a qualified. But working with your town staff was phenomenally wonderful, very smooth, very cooperative, and they did a great job with guiding us through this whole process.
We hold them in heart regard, too.
We have a more complicated property.
So, you have no other reason to keep the hearing open? Okay, by consensus, we can close the hearing at seven-twenty-five. And then we'll move on to our regular meeting. So we have minutes to consider? Any comments on the September thirty minutes?
We weren't here very long, Steve.
That's October fourteen.
Seven minutes.
September thirty took a little bit longer. We approve September thirty by consensus? We approve September thirty by consensus, since there don't seem to be any comments.
Yes.
And October fourteenth, uh was a very complicated meeting. Took all of seven minutes. Kevin, you're gonna be congratulated now, you got a new standard delivered. Uh can we approve that by consensus?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, uh we now have uh public participation. Does anybody would like to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Anybody in the public? We're getting none, we move on. Our new business, first of all, application twenty-five forty-five P, uh triple A K trucking. Uh would the applicant please come forward, this is a request for a site plan to establish an office and outside trailer parking on uh three seventy Burnham Street.
I think that's a copy, these are different. So let me give you one of these.
So I gotta say, one other person that was around for almost the entire time I was touring on planning commissions was Peter Malley. Who was a purely regular attendee of the ZBA back in the day.
Yeah, I've been hanging around these parts since December seventy-nine. Six and a half years as director of planning. I'm sure that's me, and uh and then uh then four, it'll be forty years in Vegas since we started a business design professional, so we couldn't hang around for long. So, uh for your record, Peter Malley, president and CEO of Design Professionals, eighteen person consulting practice here in South Windsor fifty-eighteenth Connecticut Avenue. Uh and we're here, uh so there are three of us here, Daniel probably won't be doing much of the presentation. We're gonna invite Kwesi Cousins to come up and do that, she's project engineer with us. You might not, you've seen her around probably at meetings on the side. Uh she has never done to, by now recollection, hasn't done a formal presentation to you, so she's gonna be doing it for the first time tonight, before the planning is on the commission. Uh just to let you know, she's uh been with us about a year, she's project engineer. Uh she graduated from Drexel University in Philadelphia, a bachelor's in civil engineering degree, anybody know that? Yeah, okay, and uh and also she's uh also passed her fundamentals of engineering exam. Uh which means she's uh passed half the test to become a licensed professional engineer, just needs a couple more years of experience. And then she'll be able to take the second half of the exam and become a licensed professional engineer, but she's well on her way. Uh she does all kinds of things behind the scenes in our office, and she's been a wonderful uh addition to our staff. So, um our client's here tonight, uh in the second row on the left, Rahim Rikotovic and his wife, Marinetta. And let me spell that for you, is that best, right now? Where do you wanna get, we can do it.
You'll get it from me, Peter.
Oh, you'll get it from me, okay. So Rahim and um Marinetta, um they have a business in Rocky Hill called Triple A Trucking. Uh and uh they have acquired a property at three seventy Burnham Street. In the I-zone, it's the north side of Burnham Street, the South Windsor side of Burnham Street, and of course, in East Hartford, useful thoroughfare. Uh and they acquired that, it's uh just shy of an acre, I think it's point nine five acres. Um the parcel, about a hundred and twenty feet wide and about three and forty feet deep. It has an existing house on it, it's just uh about, just over forty-four hundred square feet, as I understand it. It is in the process of being renovated by the prior owner, so it was essentially halfway done. The exterior looks new, um windows are in, roof, doors, all stuff, but it's incomplete at this time. Uh the intention is to finish that over time, uh and uh and then also to reside there. Uh they also wanna move their business over, once this gets established, uh once this gets approved, they like to move their business over. Uh they have not only this large house on that property, they also have a a large garage, residential garage. They wanna take the very back uh projection of the building, the garage on the first floor, it has a small second floor as well. Uh above that area, we want, they wanna have about a six hundred square foot office for their use. Uh the use consists of, they are uh interstate transport company. Uh they uh they serve uh southern New England and transport product, uh any kinds of commodity. Out to um to other states, and I'll tell you some of the states they transport to. Uh so they transport to Georgia, Kansas, Kentucky, Indiana, Oklahoma, North Carolina, South Carolina, Illinois. And they do not go down south, all the way down to Florida or anything, and they do not go to west coast. So they serve a large area in the middle part of the country, uh but they pick up product from clients. Uh in Connecticut, Mass, Rhode Island, three southern New England states, and then they transport it. Once they pick it up, they immediately drive, it's about two days trip typically, to get out to those mid mid uh mid USA states. Uh and then it's another two or more days left, depending what other stops they may have to make. Uh so their their two vehicles are WB sixty-sevens, uh trucks, tra- tractor trailer trucks. And they are on the road all week long. They they leave first thing Monday morning, uh it's Rahim and one other employee is a driver as well. They leave Monday morning and they return Friday or Saturday. They go to and from their site, as I understand it, via uh go west on Burnham Street to Route five and then get on the interstate highway system, uh and go to their destinations. Uh so they're gone all week, uh so the purpose, the office is gonna be lightly used, uh it'll have a bathroom in it. Um but for the most part, it will remain empty during the week and even on weekends. So, uh so again, over time, they're going to finish the house, which looks nice on the outside, finish that, that'll be their home. Uh as that gets finished, they relocate, they're gonna relocate, first relocate their business to this site, it's a just shy of one acre site. The uh building is, uh I mean, pardon me, the use that they're proposing is general contracting establishment. Um which is allowed in the industrial zone, uh and they conferred with Michelle and Justin with respect to that particular use. And they will not use a garage for, other than just residential, that's where they park their cars. Their car garage, and they have extra room in there also for the residential purpose. Uh so the property has been used historically as a non-conforming residential use. Uh so they're going to now make it into conforming industrial uh use. So they're going to take, uh there is, the driveway is paved, uh between this concrete, and they're going to add, uh they have two spaces on the north side of the building, far side of the building. Uh where they park vehicles. And so they're going to add one additional space, they're going to add some more gravel for circulation on the site. And then they will uh add, uh and then includes adding another parking space, still have three parking spaces for the business. And then they'll utilize the two garage spaces for the residents, for their home. Uh they can also, I think, even park more vehicles in there if they wanted, uh but it's not for commercial purposes. Uh and they'll re-stripe the uh two parking spaces so that they'll end up having one. Uh van-sized handicap accessible space plus plus the two other spaces. They're gonna be, do a slight widening of the driveway. Uh southwest corner of it, uh for circulation going to and from Route five for their trucks. They will uh. Also, they will be uh doing, um uh they'll be, uh Kwesi will review, they're gonna create a detention basin in the southeast corner, she'll review that in a moment. And they're also doing, uh and some water quality treatments associated with that. And she'll, she'll address utilities, other engineering components, and she'll even take a shot at Mark Schmidt's landscape art picture, she'll plan to describe that. Uh and gate associated with that and fencing and lighting as well. The property is fenced on two sides, there are fences, the other property to the west has uh has also a circumferential fence, it's not their fence on the west side. And uh the house, if you've been by, it's green vinyl siding and also stone ph- phased foundation, looks quite nice. I guess I covered most of that, uh fire apparatus, you've checked into that, uh and the turning movements are fine, even on site for fire apparatus to turn around. Uh if they choose not to, if they choose to go into the site, uh there are no wetlands on the site or flood plain. And Ian Cole, wetland scientist, uh who's gone before the wetlands, in the Wetlands Agency regularly, uh has certified that or in a report. Uh and we don't have to go to wetlands commission first, this is one of the few I've done in a long time, which is a conservation application. Uh just for uh the minor uh improvements to the property, uh there's no involvement whatsoever with wetlands or flood plain. So, like to turn it over to Kwesi right now, and she will discuss uh what her engineering uh design is, what she and Daniel have done. So Kwesi?
Uh good evening, members of the commission for the record, my name is Kwesi Cousins. I am a project engineer with Design Professionals Inc. To reiterate, the site does not intersect any identified wetland or wetland upland areas. Two drainage points were determined based on our assessment of the existing stormwater flow. Design point one, where stormwater exits the site from the northwestern property boundary. And design point two, where stormwater exits the site to Burnham Street. Review of existing topography revealed contributing stormwater runoff crossing the site from the eastern property boundary where the site intersects the extensive. Upland drainage area, uh steep slopes gradually transitioning to gentle slopes. Directing stormwater runoff towards design point one to the north, an elongated bridge was also identified, which directs stormwater runoff. South towards the site with some drainage across the western property boundary. The site is relatively flat with no more than two feet, and the fronts and the highest and lowest point elevations between sixty-one and sixty-three feet across the site. The drainage divide was identified passing through the southern portion of the property. Uh where stormwater runoff from the garage and parts of the between this pavement with the. And lawn are intercepted by gentle swell which promotes runoff to the back of the site towards design point one. While the house in the main in between this drive, there are stormwater runoff towards Burnham Street. So for stormwater management, we evaluated existing site conditions to preserve the natural hydrology. Limiting disturbance to the flow path of the upland area while providing water quality control for the increase in impervious area. For proposed conditions, there will be an approximate sixteen point seven percent increase in the impervious areas. With the addition of the gravel drive, the parking spaces with the two minutes drive and the extended driveway apron to Burnham Street. In terms of water quality, the stormwater quality detention basin is proposed with additional qualifying impervious areas. Uh you can see outlined here at the back of the site, that's the property. Uh part, uh they're also considered in the design. Parts of the, for the pond, parts of the existing between this drive and proposed gravel drive will drain towards the pond. It will also intercept flow from the neighboring property on the side, which would have made us way to design point one in the back. Test was conducted on site, identified a high groundwater table. With this, it was unfeasible to take design, uh to take, it was unfeasible to design a basin to take credit for infiltration. As required three feet in vertical separation between the bottom of the basin and the groundwater table would not be used in this area. The bottom elevation of the pond is fifty-nine point five feet. With a maximum storage capacity of three thousand seven hundred and nineteen cubic feet approximately. Outflow will be controlled by an outlet pipe with an emergency outflow pipe also proposed right here. So for the main outlet pipe, it flows through a hydrodynamic separator which will provide treatment before flowing down to a catch basin on Burnham Street. Outflows are controlled by this outlet control structure here, which comprises of a series of uh orifices or five, which are elevated different elevations to control the flow. Drainage device for evaluating stormwater management were more nuanced for the proposed conditions to regulate stormwater. The gravel drive to the east of the garage and the additional parking space will drain to the area, will drain to areas at the rear of the property designed as qualifying previous areas. For erosion and sedimentation control, a temporary sediment trap is proposed in the same location as the basin. With the pipe elevations being the same for ease of construction. Additional measures included silk fences around the perimeter of the site. Uh with additional hay bales and temporary stockpile areas. And for landscaping, this is from Hargreaves or Landscape Art Center, who could not be with us this evening. The detention basin will be seeded with an appropriate erosion control. Or detention basin seed mix with native and naturalized grasses from New England wetland plants. And in front of detention basin at the entrance to the property will be a plant bed containing a colorful variety of native evergreen and deciduous shrubs. And perennials that will provide a benefit to wildlife and be an attractive feature for the site. Night lighting courtesy of illuminate, uh three different types of fixtures are proposed, uh the front, rear, and side doors. The fixture at the front will be mounted at twenty-five feet, the other fixtures will be mounted at four feet. Uh with a bug rating of zero and lights intensity three thousand thousand. Utilities for the office that is located in the garage. The service connections from the existing building for sewer, water, and electrical will be extended to service the office. And we did receive comments from the town, uh Justin uh provided us with comments which were addressed and resubmitted. They should have been uh in red revision levels on your site plan. Thank you.
See if the commissioners have questions in a minute, yeah.
Uh just a couple other parting comments here, concluding comments. As far as traffic goes, there isn't a lighter use sever proposed probably in this town, I suppose, other than one that there's no activity going on whatsoever at it. Uh uh when Rahim and Marinetta move in, uh they're go- both gonna be on the site, they don't even have a trip to get to the office. Per se, uh and uh their driver, other driver will come to the, will drive here, I suppose, uh and park there. So probably one parking space for employees, and then he gets in the, in the truck and takes off for the day, for the week. Uh and then returns at the end of the week, picks up his car and takes off. So the total trips is really lighter than light. Uh impervious coverage is gonna be, we allow, of course, in industrial zone sixty-five percent, we're gonna be under forty percent. Even with improvements, cause you know gravel is even treated as impervious coverage in South Windsor and most other towns. And uh, let's see, was there what else I wanted to say? I think that's it. Yeah, I think that's it, so we're, uh Daniel and Kwesi and I are available, but oh, one other thing. Uh we did check uh with Rahim, uh he even demonstrated how on site, we don't have to maneuver, although it's in East Hartford, we still wanna consider that. Um whether or not there's circulation in the street is necessary to move the trucks in and out, no, they can do it all on site, and he even demonstrated that, and we even filmed it, uh Daniel was there. And uh and so, yeah, it works, uh to get both trucks in there, not a problem. Just a minor improvement, or they have to put the gravel in, of course, and minor improvements to the paved driveway at the beginning, so the radii, radius on the southwest corner of the driveway can. accommodate both trucks. That's, that's it, um pretty simple, and it will become more, more conforming uh use. And it was hundred percent residential in a industrial area, and now it'll be, uh there'll be an industrial use there along with the residence of the owners. So, pretty simple, and they look forward to moving back, I was talking to them ahead of time, uh before the meeting, and Rahim and Marinetta. They very much look forward to relocating their business and their home to South Windsor. Uh and uh and they uh they can't wait, and it's gonna take just a little while for them to do that before the residence is done, but the other, soon, they hope to move the business over shortly.
And just one more point for the record, Daniel Jameson, Director of Engineering and Design Professionals. We do have those videos of the truck maneuver available for viewing if anyone wants to see them, but we observe those truck maneuvers. Autodesk has a turning template that has this constraints, but we've always stated that truck drivers can do much better than what the auto turning would allow. So, we went out there, Rahim made the maneuver readily a couple times for us, so we were able to record that. Um as a testimony to the fact that he can make the maneuver on site.
Did all three of you sign in?
Kwesi did, and I did, and Daniel did as well, yes.
Okay. Alright, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, uh now we'll listen to comments from Justin Rousseau.
Thank you.
It's getting off light.
So, a lot of this was already covered. I'll just touch on some important things. So, this is a request for a site plan to establish an office and outside trailer parking on property located at three seventy Burnham Street in the industrial zone. Per our regulations, a freestanding, single-family residence in the industrial zone may be used by the owner of the facility in conjunction with a permitted commercial use. As discussed, the applicant is looking to occupy the home and operate a small trucking business from this address with an office in the existing garage. The proposed condition of the site appears to comply with our zoning regulations. Lot coverage is demonstrated as thirteen point three percent, where fifty percent is allowed. Impervious coverage is thirty-nine point two percent, where sixty-five percent is allowed. Lot area, frontage, yard setbacks, and building height appear to comply, except for a non-conforming side yard setback of one and a half feet, where ten is required. So, to speak on the maneuverability of the tractor trailers, I saw the videos and also town engineer reviewed the videos. I'll go into his comments later. But to me, it, it seems okay. I had my concerns initially before seeing the video because the turning maneuvers weren't provided. But, yeah, after watching that, it's pretty clear that, at least in my opinion, they can make that maneuver successfully. Design Professionals did provide vehicle maneuvering plans showing a shorter signal unit fire pump truck and that also maneuvers through the site very easily. Fire marshal had, had no concerns, no comments. A photometric plan has been provided as part of this application. The proposed light fixtures appear to comply with our regulations. However, there's no mention of fixtures being controlled by dimmers, timers, or sensors to limit unnecessary lighting. This property is served by water, sewer, and gas service lines. Water and sewer is provided by MDC and gas is provided by CNG. And finally, for planning, there are no regulated wetlands on this site. But as was discussed, the application proposes disturbance exceeding half an acre and is therefore subject to approval of the inland wetlands agency and conservation commission for an erosion sediment control plan, which is currently pending and on the November fifth agenda. For engineering, from Tori Di Sodoti, town engineer, the following are the engineering department comments. Number one, provide maintenance and protection of traffic measures for the stormwater drainage work in Burnham Street. Standard maintenance and protection of traffic details can be found under zero nine seven one zero zero one A. Traffic control plans and typical materials in the link below, and a link is provided. Number two, ideally, the proposed one hundred and eighty-five lineal foot twelve inch HDP pipe running along Burnham Street would have a minimum slope of half a percent. This is a suggestion from the town of South Windsor Engineering Department. Number three, please review at nine foot dimension of proposed standard car parking space, nine foot by eighteen feet. And then in parentheses, one SP. Just north of the van accessible parking space location. The dimension is conflicting with the proposed gravel drive, which identified three standard car parking spaces. Please verify. Number four, please provide details for the bituminous concrete sidewalk. If a heavy vehicle is consistently driving on the bituminous concrete sidewalk for turning maneuvers onsite, please provide a pavement section that is suitable for heavy vehicle loads. Number five, after reviewing the video of the WB sixty-seven truck performing the movements required onsite, the engineering department has no further comments. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, Tori Sodoti. So, with that, there are no additional comments from staff.
Thank you. I will listen to commissioners who have any questions or comments. And alternate, you can speak at this point, but you won't be allowed to vote. Starting with Commissioner Kilbourn.
Another excellent presentation by Design Professionals. I'm, I'm looking at the drawings and I'm seeing those trucks. And I think you're not getting in there.
You're not getting in there, but I guess you're getting in there. Skill, tail. Thank you.
Commissioner Capachanos?
Yeah, you're, you're good drivers if you can do that blindside back end on that, so. Good job. Not every trucker can do that.
Commissioner Wadansky?
I have curiosity, how, not that this, but how close to the property fence line is the parking for the, of those trucks to the house next door?
It'd be at least five feet. It's five feet to the property line is the gravel area.
And, and I assume, I mean, this is probably not even, but do, what are the homeowners that live right there with the truck? Like, has there been any feedback from the neighbors?
Do you have any interfaith with the neighbors? Let me go, let me go ask my clients. You had any conversations with the neighbors immediately to the right?
I asked him, he said, we don't have any.
Excuse me, if they're going to speak, they need to sign in?
Yeah.
Doesn't have any issue. We ask him, we say, it's everything's fine.
Who's speaking?
Uh, yes, Marhanta. She's co-owner of the property. So, can you go sign in? She's never done this before, sorry.
My first time.
It helps, it helps us get the minutes right if you'd sign in.
Yeah. So, I guess they didn't have an objection?
If you wouldn't repeat what you just said.
I, I talked with my neighbor for the, the right side. I asked him if he had any issue with my trucks. He's saying, no, I'm truck driver, not having any issue to parking here. But if you need some letters or something, I'm going to ask him if he's okay.
Okay.
He talks every day, you see him?
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
He's a truck driver, okay.
Yeah, he's a truck driver too.
It's a permitted use in an industrial zone.
Okay, that's another question. Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter?
I only just have kind of a curiosity. So, the truck lanes I see on the drawing are for two tractor trailers, right? So, is there any wish five, ten years from now to expand?
Yes, but we have, we have expanded one, but it is a owner, the company. We have ours two trucks for the, the owners of two trucks. But if somebody came to work with us, the, depends, he gonna be like in Kentucky. Doesn't matter where's the driver, just he work with us, I'm looking load for him. Now, leaving, now specify living in Connecticut, he gonna be in Ohio. Why he's gonna come over here to parking the trucks in Connecticut, he's living in Ohio.
I, I understand.
Just, just a comment, Stephanie, the site plan you're reviewing is only for two trucks. So, it would be limiting it to two.
Okay, so if there was ever.
There'd be some further moves needed.
They'd have to come back.
Exactly, yes, with an additional gravel area, of course.
Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Foley?
So, the, I, I don't need to see the video, but I'm looking here at this drawing. And this was truck and trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
WB sixty-seven full size.
All right, God bless you. Now, the, the area, there's quite a bit of area where you have the, you know, approximate location of qualifying pervious area. Are we looking for? Even though we're, we're permitting two truck, two tractor trailers, is that area to be for like empty trailers to be hooked onto or?
No, no, it's nothing to do with that.
It's a kind of the quantity considerations for the, so a parking area to decide.
Okay.
It is slow to drain towards the back of the site. So, this would be graded to convey the water this way. And it's for infiltration purposes and basically cleaning any sediment from this area.
Okay.
It's a water quality measure primarily, yes.
And then, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful garage that, now, did you build that garage? Okay.
Prior owner did, finished the garage, but didn't have.
So, you'll just, you'll do maintenance on your truck in that garage, but just your trucks only?
Yes. But we're not doing anything in garage. If something happened like tires, we're gonna do, we can go inside.
All right, no, no.
Maybe sometimes the trailer.
I just want to make sure it's not like a general commercial repair shop or whatever.
No, no.
I have nothing else.
And they, they really do plan on using that for residential, other than the office in the back.
No, I'm good.
Mr. Burnsley?
So, Commissioner Foley raises an interesting question. You're not doing repairs in the garage. Your, the vehicles are going outside for any repair?
Yes.
Maintenance or whatever?
You go to service.
Yeah. And is there, I don't know if you said this, is there a trash dumpster or anything like that on the site?
There is one proposed at the corner of the garage.
And that's new, that's something that isn't there now.
Yes.
Yeah, just a standard trash bin receptacle area.
Every day, run of the mill.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Mr. Viteri?
No further questions now.
Commissioner Cavanaro?
I have no comment.
Okay, so, would you explain to me, I guess it's Quasi, what's this CPA pervious area? What are you do, are you doing anything there or is that just a designated place you're not going there?
So, there, there. Okay, so we're not doing anything there. Just that, this area that we're proposing for the gravel drive for two minutes, the water quality would be controlled by this hydrodynamic separator. This area at the back for the trailer parking, there is a section in the stormwater control panel that allows you to consider a area of vegetated landscape, well, space, as a means to control water quality from, from simple impervious area. So, it basically says that you should measure the length and width of the area and have a similar sized area in the back that can control infiltration and any, you know, basically cleaning of that area. So, that's what we're proposing. It will be graded to continue to drain across the northwestern property boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Just two final comments. Just said, thanks to Commissioners Cavanaro, Wagner, and Viteri for your service. I know your term is expiring, you're not continuing on, you're not going to run for reelection or whatever. I know Commissioner Wadansky is running, so her term is up, but she's running and we wish her well. So, but thank you very much for your service. I know it's all, it's a lot to ask of people to volunteer for these positions. It can be very late nights, a lot of nights, and a lot of homework and even driving by sites and reviewing documentation and stuff. So, it's, it's a lot to ask of people and it's wonderful that some people do step up and serve the community. And without that, the community doesn't function. So, thank you very much for that. And also, yeah, we have been also thinking about in our office today about people in Jamaica. We even have people in our office who have family in Jamaica. So, and it is a category five.
Thank you. So, I think we have any other comments from commissioners, a motion would be in order?
Move to approve application twenty-five dash forty-five P, AAAK Trucking. Points one through ten, ooh, we have additional notes here, I'll read this one, thank you. Points one through ten are all written in, so I'll read eleven and twelve. The final plans shall be revised to show that all proposed light fixtures shall be controlled by dimmers, slash timers, slash sensors, and point twelve. Town engineers' comments dated October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five shall be incorporated into the final plans.
I'm going to read condition four.
Yeah. A landscape bond of the amount of three thousand is required. It must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed.
Okay, thank you.
One second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You know, we move on to application twenty-five forty-seven P. Excuse me, guys.
I've got that one. Move to approve application twenty-five dash forty-seven P.
Excuse me, hold your conversations outside, please.
Um, Patel, you want me to start over again? Okay. Patel Rees subdivision and detached accessory apartment, one through six. Standard approval conditions. Seven, okay, a drain, seven, a drainage assessment fee in the amount of fifty dollars shall be submitted to this commission. Eight, no building permits will be issued until all modifications have been complied with and the final plans have been filed in the town clerk's office. Nine, the detached accessory apartment shall not be limited to its existing square footage and is not permitted to be a short-term rental. Ten, properties with accessory apartments shall be owner occupied, either in the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment. This shall be reaffirmed by the property owner every four years to the South Windsor planning apartment. Eleven, the zoning tables on the drawings shall be updated to accurately reflect all the minimum lot and area requirements as shown in table three dot dot one dot two A of the town of South Windsor zoning regulation. Twelve, town engineers' comments dated ten twenty-one, twenty twenty-five shall be incorporated into the final plans. Thirteen, key map shall be provided in accordance with chapter three, IA three of the, of the subdivision regulations. Fourteen, zoning table shall be updated per table three dot one dot two A of the town of South Windsor zoning regulations. Fifteen, the rear yard setback shall be updated to measure to the rear of lot one. Sixteen, side yard and rear yard setbacks shall measure from the proposed garage on lot one.
Second.
Any other discussion? In that case, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have any bonds?
No bonds.
Do we have any old business?
No old business.
We have training available.
Well, I can do them in our other business, but okay.
Okay, all right. No applications officially received or?
We did not receive anything.
Other business?
So, other business, we do have in your upcoming schedule, we'll see November seventeen. That's November eighteen. I talked to town attorney today, actually, and we'll do our normal seven PM meeting. We'll have a, a business meeting to do, assuming we have all the seven members that are the members available. And the only thing on the agenda that night will be a training session. We did talk about potentially having some other awards, the Wetlands and ZVA maybe come for a portion of it, FOI kind of training and whatnot. We're still working on some of those logistics. But we definitely will be having planning zoning commission training. And then the only other meeting for November would be the next week, we have a public hearing on the text amendment. Depending on who ends up being chair, I'll just, they're out there. If either of those meetings, we want to have just a general discussion, planning discussion on some goals over the next year or topics that you want to work on. Justin and I are always looking for new things to be looking forward. And to that end, I'd suggest everybody take a look at your P O C D. Look at some of the goals that we set out in our P O C D and maybe there's something we want to work on in that regard. So, and then lastly, I just want to thank Steve for his many years of service to the town. It's always a little sad when people that are really good people decide to move on. But I'm wishing you the best and moving on to things that you really are want to spend time doing. And Bob and Alan, who both contributed tremendous in the last four years. We had a busy four years. We had a lot of, a lot of hot topics that we dealt with over the last four years. So, I think they're chickening out a little bit myself. Having said that, I'm sure they'll appear back in front of us in some form at some time. But wish you both well as well, so.
Thank you, Michelle. Any correspondence or reports?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.